Good evening. Welcome to the October 23 Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, color roll please.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Coaklin.
Here.
Britt Wheat.
Present.
And Ciara Messenger.
Present.
Okay, and we'll have our minutes of previous meeting and our next meeting. So move on to old business. First item up, important one, ordinance 2023-18, reading of the 2024 Lebanon City Budget. This ordinance is on second reading. Tony, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, thank you. Okay, this is ordinance 2023-18. Be it ordained by the Lebanon Common Council that for expenses of the Lebanon Civil City for the year ending December 31, 2024, the sums herein specified are appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named for the purpose specified. Subject to the laws governing the same, such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Lebanon Civil City, the property tax levies and the property tax rates are specified and included herein. This ordinance and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage and approval by the Lebanon Common Council. And I'll read the fund names and the totals. So for Casino Riverboat, it's $93,000. General Fund is $14,793,723. Debt Service is $143,926. Bond Number Three is $371,028. Bond Number Four is $1 million. Fire Pension, $303,665. Police Pension, $235,979. Local Road and Street, $309,203. Motor Vehicle Highway, $1,516,371. Park and Recreation, $1,796,12. Park Bond, $382,831. Cube Cap Improvement is $31,000. Cube Capital Development is $100,000. Sewer Bond is $504,794. Sanitation is $1,147,000. There are actually four different amounts so that are not approved by DLGF, but I'll go ahead and read those. Food and Beverage is $500,000. Public Safety Lit for Police and Fire is $3,381,797. And the American Rescue Plan is $1,475,100. We have about, one, two, three, nine non-reverting funds, and those total $599,000. That ends the reading.
Thank you, Tony. Any public comment concerning our 2024 budget? Any discussion from council? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. And I just want to say, council appreciate the hard work this year again. Always appreciate the spirit of collaboration we have. I really think it's always been a good process, give and take, as we kind of craft this together to balance a lot of, you know, needs, but also try to sprinkle some, you know, investments for our future in there as well too. So appreciate the collaborative spirit that we've continued to have here. So, thank you guys. All right, next will be ordinance, you know, some buttering up before we do the salary ordinance. Here we go. Just kidding. Next we ordinance 2023-19, City of Lebanon Salary Ordinance. This is also on second reading.
Thank you. Be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of Lebanon that two-thirds of its members being present and concurring therein, following statement of salaries as base pay for position listed, that full-time employees of the City of Lebanon receive longevity pay at the rate of $75 per year, per each year of service. Longevity pay begins after the first full year of service and does not include the current year of service when calculating the amount for each employee. Public Safety longevity schedule is .0075 of first-class firefighter slash patrolman salaries and shall be capped at 20 years of service. All first-class firefighters and patrolmen with five years of service or less will remain on the civilian longevity schedule until their sixth year of service. If the current employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than the amount listed in said ordinance plus the longevity of the employee transferring to said vacancy. And here is a list of the following salaries beginning January 1, 2024. And I will read the department and the totals. Motor Vehicle Department is $640,970. Parks Department is $942,114. Youth love rates apply to a 35- to 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise requiring the above-named employees to work more than 40 hours per week as intended, they shall be compensated according to the Federal Labor Standard Act and the city's overtime policy. This section does not apply to department heads. Planning Department is $573,922. Clerk Commission is $6,000. Police Department is $2,862,819. Fire Department is $2,383,472. Clerk Treasurer's Office is $202,451. The Mayor's Office is $121,322. Community Development is $102,067. Engineering is $87,396. Lit Public Safety for Fire is $980,750. Lit Public Safety for Police is $804,804. Annual salaries of the following council members shall be, for City Council, at six members, at $11,500 each, and one at $12,500, for a total of $81,500. The Board of Works is a total of $3,600. The City Plan Commission total is $9,600. Plan, Board of Zoning Appeals, sorry, $6,000. Park Board is $3,600. Plan Commission, zoning, and Park Board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings they attend. This ordinance shall take effect January 1, 2024.
Tony, any public comment concerning our salary ordinance? Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
I would say I appreciate the council's investment in our people and our employees as well. That's honestly what I've always say is one of our biggest assets to the city government. And so I appreciate the continued investment and working as we continue to, you know, add additional staff, but then also value the positions and people that dedicate their, their works and time to the city. So appreciate that as well. So with that, would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2023-19.
The current employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than the amount listed in said ordinance plus the longevity of the employee transferring to said vacancy. And here is a list of the following salaries beginning January 1, 2024. And I will read the department and the totals. Motor Vehicle Department is $640,970. Parks Department is $942,114. Youth love rates apply to a 35- to 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise requiring the above-named employees to work more than 40 hours per week as intended, they shall be compensated according to the Federal Labor Standard Act and the city's overtime policy. This section does not apply to department heads. Planning Department is $573,922. Clerk Commission is $6,000. Police Department is $2,862,819. Fire Department is $2,383,472. Clerk Treasurer's Office is $202,451. The Mayor's Office is $121,322. Community Development is $102,067. Engineering is $87,396. Lit Public Safety for Fire is $980,750. Lit Public Safety for Police is $804,804. Annual salaries of the following council members shall be, for City Council, at six members, at $11,500 each, and one at $12,500, for a total of $81,500. The Board of Works is a total of $3,600. The City Plan Commission total is $9,600. Plan, Board of Zoning Appeals, sorry, $6,000. Park Board is $3,600. Plan Commission, zoning, and Park Board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings they attend. This ordinance shall take effect January 1, 2024.
Tony, any public comment concerning our salary ordinance? Any discussion from council? I would say I appreciate the council's investment in our people and our employees as well. That's honestly what I've always say is one of our biggest assets to the city government. And so I appreciate the continued investment and working as we continue to, you know, add additional staff, but then also value the positions and people that dedicate their, their works and time to the city. So appreciate that as well. So with that, would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2023-19.
Lit Public Safety for Fire is $980,750. Lit Public Safety for Police is $804,804. Annual salaries of the following council members shall be, for City Council, at six members, at $11,500 each, and one at $12,500, for a total of $81,500. The Board of Works is a total of $3,600. The City Plan Commission total is $9,600. Plan, Board of Zoning Appeals, sorry, $6,000. Park Board is $3,600. Plan Commission, zoning, and Park Board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings they attend. This ordinance shall take effect January 1, 2024.
Tony, any just public comment concerning our salary ordinance? Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
I would say I appreciate the council's investment in our people and our employees as well. That's honestly what I've always say is one of our biggest assets to the city government. And so I appreciate the continued investment and working as we continue to, you know, add additional staff, but then also value the positions and people that dedicate their, their works and time to the city. So appreciate that as well. So with that, would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2023-19. Motion to approve from Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. Thank you, council. All right, and finally, ordinance 2023-20, fixing the salaries of elected officials. This is also on second reading.
Ordinance 2023-20. Be it ordained by the Common Council, the City of Lebanon, two-thirds of its members being present and concurring therein, the maximum salaries of the following elected officials of the City of Lebanon beginning January 1, 2024 are as follows. Mayor Gentry is $65,401. Clerk Treasurer is $70,078. Common Council, which I just read, is $81,500. In addition to the funds paid by the Civil City as set out in Section Two above, the following elected and appointed officers to be paid from the funds of the municipal utilities are as follows. Mayor, $33,974. Clerk Treasurer, $19,475. And Deputy Clerk Treasurer, $25,360.
Thank you, Tony. Any public comment concerning that ordinance? Counsel discussion? Would entertain a motion then?
Make a motion. We accept ordinance number 2023-20.
Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ciara. Seconded. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. Thank you, council. Okay, that includes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay, new business then. Let's do, first item up here will be the food and beverage request for the Moon and Boone Solar Eclipse. Joe?
Good evening, everyone. Just so the guys in the back know, I'm plugging into the HDMI here. A few slides to share. Pass that along. If you didn't know already, the eclipse in 2024 is taking place on April 8. And that will be starting at 1:50 PM, so that's a Monday. 1:50 PM is when the eclipse will begin. 3:07 is when the total eclipse happens, and then it wraps up at 4:23 PM. And so it's going to be a big day, going to be a big time, and there we go. Okay, great. And so if you're in the path of totality, which is, this is the map that I'm showing you. So you see the light orange portions right there? That's where Boone County and here, we're standing in Lebanon. That's where that is. We are in the path of totality. The pink portion is where it will be completely dark the longest. And then you see the opposite on the other side, the orange side. Typically, communities in the path of totality, their population triples over the period of time where a, an eclipse takes place. So if you're doing the math at home, and I put it at the bottom, rough guesstimates there, Lebanon population around 17K. If it triples during that weekend, we're looking at 51,000 people. And so those of us who have taken part in a path of totality eclipse, it is a big deal and it is a busy time. Throughout the course and the portions of our community, we have established with the help of the Boone County CBB and several stakeholders within our community, we've established eight different watch locations. If you go back to the map, you can see that there are communities from the north that will be coming down into Lebanon northwest as well, so typical New Clinton County, Chicagoland area over in Illinois, eastern Illinois. So those watch locations are, like the Withem YMCA, senior services up to the north, Memorial Park downtown, Lebanon Little League is four, the Menards Parking Lot is five, Admiral Longley Park is six, the Field House, currently named the Lebanon Field House, is seven, and the Boone County Fairgrounds is watch party location number eight. And so these are all off of main thoroughfares and places where visitors will congregate, but also locals as well for enjoyment during that eclipse and the path of totality. I broke down what these different watch locations will, or expected to have with your approval and with your collaboration. So we'd like to have music and entertainment at a number of these, including the YMCA. There'll be a special kind of souped-up pickleball tournament at Memorial Park. There'll be an at-night scavenger hunt, a go-in-the-dark scavenger hunt. There'll be a downtown concert. Lebanon Lily is going to add some family fun. Menards, they're going to have some food, some entertainment, some different things going on there. Makeshift campground, also some music taking place or set to take place, rather, at Admiral Longley Park. The Field House, still not sure what they're going to do yet, but we do know that they aren't going to be collaborating or asking for anything specifically from the city. Same goes for the Boone County Fairgrounds. There will be a Pink Floyd cover band, but the Boone CBB is picking up the tab there, and the watch location will be completely staffed by them, including their temporary campgrounds as well. Other different things within the community that we wanting to add, so an eclipse-themed interactive mural. So if you're bringing your family, if you're in town or visiting, you'll be able to be there and be able to take part in the creation of this interactive mural because of the experts have told us that you want to make it not only an experience for the year that you're in town for the path of totality in that eclipse, you want to have it be reoccurring. And so we want to have people be able to have a mural that they take part in, and they can revisit year after year. A time capsule as well is something we threw out there, and an eclipse-themed 5K that will be staffed by a professional organization. So along with all these things, you're recommended to have all the toilets and the signage and in many different languages to help those folks that aren't from our country, which we will have some visitors from not only domestic but foreign, visiting our community. And so being able to add all those amenities. And so what I'm requesting from the council tonight is a total of $125,000 to go towards the marketing, to go towards the signage, and to be able to add a lot of the things that I showed you in this slide presentation, different things that we can add throughout our community to be able to enhance the experience of truly a once-in-a-lifetime feat here in Lebanon, and one that will not be replicated in path of totality anyway for several decades, 800 and some years from now is when the next one will happen. So.
Just a few decades there. Just a few, just a few decades. And so want to make it as wonderful as possible for as many people as possible, whether they are local Lebanon residents or ones that are visiting our community. So I'd appreciate your support and happy to answer any questions.
Before I open up for council, I would just say, and I apologize for not being able to attend the work session the other day on this, but there will be people coming to Lebanon whether we want them to be here or not. It's just, that's just what happens. And so I think it's best for us to prepare for it and try to direct and halt program, I guess, their visit to Lebanon to, one, obviously reflect well upon our community and present, you know, put us in the best light, but also, two, just from a traffic, it's going to be a disaster mess.
Good luck.
Chiefs in the back, good luck, guys. But I think the more we can kind of keep them to designated areas, kind of with these organized events, it actually would hopefully lessen the burden versus just being completely overwhelmed, that people are just trying to figure out, yes, randomly where they're going to go to try to see this once-in-a-lifetime event. So with that, I'll open it for discussions, questions for Joe from council. But I do think it is a, you know, once-in-a-lifetime is probably understated. I mean, it's, it's a monumental event happening, and I think it's best for us to try to do something to, not one, just but you put Lebanon in the best light, but then also commemorate, and then also try to organize and program it to put us in the, on the best foot forward for people. So with those comments, if council wants to say anything, feel free.
Well, I'll just add that we had that, the council work session, and Joe asked for more, but we decided that collectively unanimously that $125,000 would be a good portion for the city to donate or grant so that we could, like the mayor said, have a great experience. But even if the estimated 34,000 people don't attend, if only 17,000 people show up, that still doubles our community. And so we have to be prepared for that, and we will be. So, Brent, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm afraid you might have misspoke. It wasn't unanimous. And I'll, I'll say my piece in a second, but go ahead.
Okay, I guess I forgot about that. Anyway, no, I'm finished. I just, but we agreed for 125,000.
It was a very lively work session, and the majority of council, I think, feels the 125 is reasonable. Going through the list, I would urge you to, again, the old test wants and needs. I would say of that 125,000, probably half of it is stuff that really needs to be done. The rest of it is nice stuff, and I realize we're not in a dire financial situation, but I, I have a hard time spending 125,000. Since we're not up against a deadline, maybe we could consider giving a portion of this money, seeing how it goes, what it's going to cost, because again, on April 8, there's a 70% chance of clouds and a high temperature of 50 degrees. So, yeah, we're going to have folks here. It's going to get crazy for a while, but I'm not sure how much activities are going to be utilized by these folks. So that is my piece.
There you go. Further comment from council?
Joe, if you could talk about the other communities that Lebanon is not alone in the state of Indiana that's doing this program, could you speak a little bit on the other communities that's also doing this and trying to bring people into their areas as well?
Well, absolutely. Well, down in Marion County, the IMS will be open for an eclipse party, the Idle Jordan Museum, all the communities that you see, if you guys want to bring it up again, all the communities that are, are in a colored portion here, not white, are all investing in some kind of attraction effort. A story is told about a small town in Tennessee that is between Knoxville, and I forget the other community that was in the path of totality. They had visitors from all, all 50 states and 13 countries. And so whether you're off the grid, you're going to have significant amount of people. And so Lebanon being off a major thoroughfare like I-65 and having state roads that really interconnected us quite well, if, if we are able to add these things to, to direct them, they, they will not only stay, have a pleasurable experience, have nice things to say about Lebanon, Indiana, because remember when we did a rebranding, there were what, 102 different Lebonans throughout the United States. But wanting to be able to put that best foot forward, all the communities on this map are investing in some way, shape, or fashion to various levels. The story is told about Hopkinsville. They spent $3 million as a community. They rebranded the town. They changed the name briefly to Eclipseville, USA. A lot of us pile up our families, and we went down there. And it, it put in, it was a boon to their community, pun intended, $30 million. And so not saying it'll be 10x, and we had this, this conversation in our work session, but if, if this is our only one that we're able to see, there are some nice things that we could do to make it even better. There, there are some base things that we could do. But if this is a once-in-a-lifetime deal, we're attracting people from all over, for me, for, for my, my, my vote would be, I want some nice things. If this is a once-in-a-lifetime, and people are going to see Lebanon, Indiana for the first time, and that would be my vote, would be to do it, do it right, and do it well.
Well, and also too, the, the request from the Food and Beverage Fund also is strategic, right? I mean, obviously that's paid by people when they, when they enjoy our local food and beverage restaurants, right? So obviously if we get an influx of visitors, it replenishes that fund, right? So that's why we're asking it from the Food and Beverage Fund. I think it makes sense. I mean, again, if we see, I mean, if we can, I mean, I mean, from my understanding too, all the hotels for that weekend are already booked.
The only ones that are, are they're holding it back so they can raise the, the rates astronomically. And so all the other ones are, are 100% booked.
So, I mean, we're, I mean, we're, we're just now, I mean, we're talking about this here locally, and we've talked about it for a few months, but they've been booked for a long time. So again, there are, and I wouldn't say I'm an eclipse-type person, but this is, this is a really big deal. And obviously, we're the closest community to Chicago to where this is happening, right? So imagine all the Chicagoland area, the people that are into the eclipses, they're either going to, they're going to have to drive past Lebanon at least, right? So if we have something that, hey, that shows, hey, this is a great spot to do it, I think there's some, there's some value in that too. So, any further comments, discussion?
Because we have the eight or seven or eight different venues for them to watch, and those venues will have some type of entertainment and food component, it's going to keep people dispersed a little bit more, in my opinion, so that they all don't want to go to McDonald's or Wendy's or Cloo's at the same time. Because then they're overwhelmed, and then they have a bad experience. So I think 125,000 is going to help you accomplish that goal, along with the CBB and some other.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Some of the events will overlap, but they, they are spaced out for a reason, both in time and location as well.
So will we let the community know, you know, like if I, if I wasn't here, not an eclipse person, as Matt, how are people going to find out or restaurants around here to know that, you know, there's going to be a big bucks that weekend? I presume we're going to let them know?
A lot of those discussions have begun. We've had the stakeholder meetings where we have brought in people along Indianapolis Avenue, a main thoroughfare, along State Road 32 and 39, along with the, the north side of town, just to, to keep them abreast of what, what will be happening. Because it's, it's tough to fathom that, that this will be bigger than, than likely could be bigger.
And I think, if you remember a few years ago, we had a partial eclipse here. And I mean, I remember that it started to get a lot of buzz, right? But it happens, call it the month right before, but trying to plan all the events the month before is going to be too late, right? So I, I think everyone and their brother will know about the eclipse when it happens. So it's just, but it's a matter about us making sure that we're prepared for it, and it's, we've already done the, the lay. it's, we've already done the, the legwork to make sure it's all programmed and planned.
And to be perfectly honest, part of the price tag is that, that notification piece. And so whether they want to come, great, but letting, letting people know that they do not care at all, that this is going to be happening, maybe it's time to, to head out of the hot zone and, and be able to, to plan a little getaway, then that, that's totally fine. But we, part of, of the budget is to let everyone know what the heck's going on and when and all that, so.
Joe, I think what was brought up in our work session, I don't know that you mentioned it here, but these venues, the eight venues, you're planning on those to be more than just a one day. They're kind of, I don't know if you've mentioned that.
Yes, the, the whole, the whole scheme, and I took out that slide just to, to kind of streamline it, but you're exactly right, Morris. You want to be able to have it be an event that is an entire weekend. So you want it to be one of those things where it's not just, you know, you saw that the time, and if they bring it up again, great, but 1:50 PM to 4:23 PM isn't a whole lot of time. And so if they visit, if, if they, you know, get some of the tchotchkes, if they grab something to eat, drink, whatever, gas up their car and go, that, that's terrific. But the, the overall goal is for them to see all the great things, and being told about all the great things that Lebanon, Indiana is doing, and being able to, for them to say, well, this is happening on a Monday, but let's, let's get it in town on Saturday because they know what's, what's going on, to really make the experience great, and not just make it, you know, a pull off to the side of the road, that was great, like the, the family vacation Chevy Chase and the gang are looking at the, at the Grand Canyon, they're getting back in their car and going. We don't want to be that, we want it to be something where they stay a while and spend some time, so.
Any other discussion from council? Is there a motion concerning the request?
I have one question, probably to Tanya. We, we couldn't answer this, is, does this have to be formally written, satisfy the state's?
As long as you make a resolution, we'll just update from feedbackers.
We're a little bit confused on it the other night.
Okay. Well, and, and also the approval of the request allows Joe to start, you know, booking the stages, the bands, things that will happen this year for then. So if there's contracts, then the funds can be covered as well, too.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that was covered. Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the amount of $125,000.
We have motion.
Food and beverage.
Project. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
Aye.
Okay, request is approved. Thank you, council. All right, next will be ordinance 2020, 2023-21. This is, the numbers were wrong on your guys' agenda here. This is actually the general obligations bond on first reading. Kevin, oh, there's Kevin, there he is.
Sorry, just to clarify, 2023-21, the general obligation.
The, the numbers on the agenda were wrong.
Understood.
So that's, it's the general obligation.
Okay. Thank you. There's a lot more, there's a lot of intelligent people in the room that can, that can also speak to some of the financial process, our friends at Baker Tilly are here in the room, so they can be happy to share any technical details, financial details. But I'm just here to give you a quick overview. You know, we're talking about a, a general obligation bond for capital improvements that will include things like potential small transportation projects, park improvements, and, and street lighting at a variety of locations throughout the city, with expenses up to, totaling $550,000. So again, what we are considering tonight is ordinance 2023-21, which is an ordinance for the issuance of a general obligation bond totaling $550,000 for park improvements, street lighting improvements, and various other capital improvement projects.
Kim, Emma?
Good evening, council. Emma Adlin with Baker Tilly. To give you a little bit of context for the term of this bond issue, it's proposed to be a one-year repayment, so the tax would only be levied in 2024, and it is structured around the estimated decrease in the city's tax rate. So instead of your tax rate dropping, and then you issuing a bond for the Fordice Road project next year and the tax rate going up, maintaining a level overall tax rate for the city in '24, '25 going, going on, while funding some capital projects. So it'd be just a one-year repayment while not raising the overall tax rate of the city for next year.
So we remember too, moving through the budget process, there was a kind of a big line request from Kevin for capital projects. The idea is to do this short, you know, literally one-year bond to fund those projects without putting it in our just general overall levy, doing it as a bond issuance. So that's kind of how that was all structured. Any questions for?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
People still say their taxes go up, but you know why that is? I know why the tax goes up, what their, what their assessment was in the county. What causes it to go up?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of communities, a lot of communities are seeing their assessed values go up, and that is more of, a lot of taxes are going down because of those assessed value increases. This is just maintaining the, the targeted tax rate is .0375. It would be the rate that would keep your tax rate level from this year to next year.
Any further questions, discussion?
Question from me.
Okay, I'm going to have Rob read it, and there is a public hearing on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2023-21 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purposes of providing funds to pay for the costs of certain capital improvements, whereas the city has obtained estimates of the costs of the projects and will advertise for and receive bids for the projects. For the city to pay for the projects based on the estimates, and they will not exceed the amount of $550,000. The council finds that it does not have sufficient funds available in the existing budget and tax levy, which may be applied for those costs of the projects. This council deems it advisable to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds pursuant to Indiana law, an amount not to exceed $550,000, for the purposes of procuring funds to be applied to pay for any portions of the projects. There are several pages in here as you've received the documents, so section, I'm just going to hit the highlights like we've done before, but section one talks in several pages about the determination to proceed forward, the declaration of intent, and the authorization and details of the bonds. Again, that starts on page two, it goes all the way through page seven. On page seven, in section two, we get to the form of the bond. Section three is the sale of the bonds, and talks about how that is to be done. Section four talks about the preparation of the bonds. Section five is defeasance. Section six talks about the deposit and application of the bond proceeds. Section seven is the covenant to levy tax, the bond payment fund as well. Section eight is tax covenants and representations. And then as the mayor indicated, this is advertised for an additional appropriation, so we'll have a public hearing here. And again, the debt limit will not be exceeded, and the effect of the date, of this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its adoption, and that will have a second reading on November 13th council meeting.
Thank you, Rob. At this time then, the ordinance 2023-21 is in round of first reading. If there's any public comment, actually, excuse me, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-21. If you have a comment, please go forward, state your name for the record. Also, keep comments for three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-21. Any final thoughts, discussion from council? Okay, thank you, Emma, thank you, Kevin. That will be taken up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be November 23rd, or excuse me, 13th, November 13th at 7:15 PM. All right, next will be ordinance 2023-22. This is the Lebanon Cedars Tiff Bond, and this is also on first reading. Kevin?
Oh yeah, just a brief overview here. This is associated with the Realty Link Development Project, known as the Cedars of Lebanon. This is a project that's located really on the southern end of, of the city of Lebanon, just east of State Road 39. It's really bordered by the CSX Railway on the west side, John Shaw Road on the east side, entire road on the north side, so it forms that triangular shaped property there that you may remember is a CSX, was at one time a CSX select site. So this is a, this is a, a bond issuance, a Tiff bond issuance, that would be a developer, as we would refer to as a developer purchased and backed bond totaling proceeds not to exceed 8.5 million dollars.
We do have Greg here, Greg Hary, sorry, I always say it wrong, from Realty Link. If you want us to give kind of a quick overview of the project and I guess why you're investing in Lebanon.
Yeah, good evening, thanks for your time. Again, I'm Greg Hary with Realty Link. We came to the market approximately two and a half years ago. We've done a lot of, we're based out of South Carolina, we're about a $2 billion development company. Myself, I'm, I'm part of the Midwest region for Realty Link, I'm based out of the Milwaukee market. And we're real familiar with the Indianapolis market, my partner's done several developments here, including shops at Whitestown, if you're familiar with the shopping center of Whitestown's Parkway. And so we're in the market and, and looking to do industrial, so we really scoured the Indianapolis market, looking for which market we wanted to focus on, which brought us to Lebanon. So we landed on this site roughly about two and a half years ago and worked through the process, established a relationship with Matt and his team, later with Rob, and, and with Emma and, and Molly Whitehead as well, and just trying to figure out how we could get the utilities to the site and get going on, on industrial development, which is a great site here, has rail potential if, if we come across a rail user. So for phase one of the project, we're looking at doing 254,000 square foot buildings. We also are in the process of selling one of the sites a little further south in the development, it's 20 acres, we're working with a user there. Phase two will be right behind, which those, those buildings will be up on Tyree Road. Behind those buildings will be two 270,000 square foot buildings, and then there's another 330,000 square foot building to the south of that, that we could potentially expand up to 125,000 square feet. On the very south tip, we've got a small site for a flex building that could potentially hold 20,000 square foot user there. We're looking at a minimum assessed value around $60 million on the property, and so we're, we're hoping to have this built out in, in a timeline of no more than five years. So the, the focus here too, in, in working with Matt, in working with Boone County Economic Development Corp., is we're really trying to focus on that 150,000 square foot and smaller user, just because there's, there's just not a lot of opportunity to place those users in the marketplace. And so when we jumped into this site, that was really our focus, is how could we accommodate that, and accommodate what's going on to the north of the property, and still make it attractive for, for Lebanon, so.
Hey Greg, and just a reminder to you, that triangle piece down there, because of its adjacency to the rail there, it, it is zoned industrial in the city comprehensive plan. So that's something that we're kind of working through of what makes most sense, and that's kind of where, as we've, through these discussions over the years, we've, we've tried to target these smaller footprint, help us get advanced manufacturing specialists, obviously with the Leap District, there'd be potential for suppliers, you know, people that are related to the Leap District but don't necessarily need to be in the Leap District. So obviously something for us to kind of think about, but obviously we're, there aren't, with our Lebanon Business Park being built out, this is kind of another, this is a smaller, call it development, relatively speaking, no offense to that, Greg, but something that will obviously continue to allow us to be attractive to companies that are investing in the future and investing in the community. So obviously, we don't want to put all of our eggs in the Leap basket, and so we want to make sure we have, can diversify, can still continue to attract users that are, you know, would be fully in the city, not certainly in the Leap District. So with that, happy to answer any questions, if council had any, or if you have any questions for Greg, we'll go from there.
Yeah, what, what examples of some companies that might be tenants?
Yeah, I can kind of give you a high level.
You can lease these spots, right?
Yeah, so our goal is, is twofold. So the 20 acre site, for instance, we have a user that wants to own, so we're working with them, part of, part of working with the city on setting up the, the minimum assessed values was to accommodate their use, so they're looking at buying and building there. That, that particular facility, I'm just trying to figure out what I can and can't share.
Well, yeah, I don't think it's gone through planning yet, so it hasn't officially.
Yeah, so, but what we're looking at, I was sharing with Matt before, probably 70 to 80% of our interest right now is driven off the Leap Project, just, it's, it's really driving demand. So there's a lot of people that want to get here before them, it might be contractor-driven, so that they can provide services to the development of the Leap Project. And it's a little bit of a, a mix of different users, but feeding off, a lot of it is feeding off the Leap Project, so.
An example might be a, an electrical contractor who wants to set up shop.
Right.
So they can work out of that area.
So they've got a presence here, and, and they don't have a presence in northern Indianapolis yet, and so they want to be closer to the project, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
But it could also be a standalone user, like you mentioned, Caterpillar was looking recently, right? So there's different opportunities there as well, too, of course, all the time, so it could be.
Yeah, and it's, it, not everything is, is tied to Leap Project, but that would be an example of something that would be, yeah.
Probably won't be logistics.
No, with the smaller footprint, that's kind of why it's, it's not logistics, yeah. It's, it's more manufacturing focused, that's, it's, it's not really laid out for.
They're all rear, rearboard buildings.
Manufacturing and construction.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
The question I had is north of there, if I'm looking at this, this map correct, we're talking about the fieldhouse, hospitality, and then south of there, multifamily, and then we're going to go to an industrial type thing? How are we gonna, because I was, it was my understanding, I don't know that anything was set on paper, but I always thought that east of 39, we were going to focus on residential type things or hospitality. So now, we're going to talk about industrial?
Well, and that's the, that's the challenge that we're working on the planning side now, of like, how do we transition? There is a, there is a large, I'm trying to remember how big the, the Lent property is about, is it, Kevin, I mean, you made it, Greg, remember how big, how many acres that is?
Lent, 400 acres?
Lent, is it 400 acres, about that?
Sounds about right, yeah, it's, it's three and some change, if I remember right.
So, so there's about 300 to 400 acres or so that are kind of between this and kind of call it the fieldhouse area. So we're working with the owners of that property to kind of establish a PUD, development wise, that would allow that transition point. Again, the, if I had, no offense, Greg, again, but if I had a magic wand, right, I probably would not have loved for this to be zoned industrial, but it is, that's the decision that this council and this body made previously, that that's zoned industrial. Again, I think it was related because of the railroad. So how that transition happens from, you know, Bel Canto multifamily to industrial, that's something we have to think through a lot, and what that looks like, and that's where I think we achieve that with high standards, you know, office type tech, right? You know, whatever we want to kind of make that transition happen. Now, because the way the parcel's laid out too, it does go off of the highway, right? Because the railroad cuts in, there's, there's, it's not really right on 39, so, and that's kind of where he kind of highlighted, it transitions of what fronts, frontage, and then what's tucked in kind of in the middle and all those things, so. But yeah, how that, what that PUD looks like of what the transition between the, called fieldhouse area, and this area is definitely important, and those are ongoing decisions we're having weekly at this point.
And then east of John Shaw, I realize, oh, that's not city, or maybe it is, without looking at the most recent map, I mean, the, the greater exposure would be to anything on the east side of John Shaw, I mean, kind of the same thing there?
And I don't believe that's in the city at this time, so that's something that we'll probably again cross that bridge of.
Do we anticipate a bunch of big concrete boxes there someday?
I, I mean, again, that's, that's my, my preference would not be, right? And so we, again, I, I think this one site is zoned industrial because of the rail, and like, that's kind of my goal, is to keep that as the, to call it the center of the industrial area, and then figure out what transitions to the other uses, because, I mean, again, we all know too, that, I mean, obviously today, I mean, our, our more, we have far more demand for residential, I think, than industrial and commercial.
Right.
But also industrial and commercial pays a higher tax rate, so that's also more beneficial for the city as well, too. So something we have to balance. But again, how we, how we manage those transitions is something that Kevin and Ben and myself are kind of working on constantly, how do we balance those things?
I would reiterate all that and just add that I, I think this is close to 15 years old, the zoning classification that was made, and there've been a number of pro- old, the zoning classification that was made, and there've been a number of projects that have been pending. So, you know, there's, that's, that's just how zoning law works and to rezone a property, you know, when there's potentially projects pending would not be something that us as qualified planners or the Plan Commission would take lightly because of those pending projects. That's just not something you're legally allowed to do, just because you might want to, you might have a change of heart of what might be happening there. But site's been industrial, I think since the CSX Select Site program is probably when that started and.
It's been before that, because that was in 2016. So it was even prior to that.
2007 sounds about right, but I would have to go back and look at that. Yeah, it would have been with the original annexation. But, yeah, that's, and there's been a number of different developers and different projects that have proposed projects on that site, and, and, and that's, that has effectively secured the industrial zoning classification there.
I would say you don't hear about the ones that we don't like. Right? So this is the farthest we've gotten with, where I think we feel that this is a, it's appropriate based on the zoning, but also meets the standards that we want to see and fits the types of industry we're trying to target as a community. It's, again, why it's, why you haven't heard about the other ones, because there's been a few runs at this over the years, too, for sure.
Sure.
Didn't we have a, another cold storage facility that was looking at that piece of ground?
That's the property, is it that one or is the one yours?
Yeah, so, well, I think it's us, and I think there's one maybe to the north, potentially. But, so we also have a sister company, RL Cold, and we develop cold storage across the country. That is a potential option here. We're not certain yet. That's something we'll cross that bridge probably in 18 to 24 months with them, as their kind of, their pipeline's a little full right now, so.
How tall are the buildings gonna be that you're gonna?
Those are 50 feet.
How far?
50 feet.
50 feet.
Yeah. It's a pretty attractive looking building, though. I mean, it's, it's a, yeah.
Well, and we, and we did a, we didn't rezone this PUD, right? Didn't, under me? Kevin? I can't remember now.
Um, I don't.
Yeah, I think this is a standard industrial zoning.
It's a straight zoning, so yeah, so it'd have to meet our current zoning laws. There's no, there's no PUD on this, excuse me. So it's, so it'd have to meet all of our requirements for all that.
I was just hoping it wasn't.
It's not a, it's not an automated one like New Cold. Yeah, it wouldn't be 150 feet tall, no.
Yeah, because it's kind of odd out there with a house out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just to clarify, I mean, that makes sense, and it's currently zoned that, so I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to see where the general thought is. Again, with the caveat, some of this isn't even in the city, but with the increasing demand, I, I was curious as to if, if there was a thought of trying to make that whole block as industrial as opposed to residential.
Yeah, again, I see this as if there's any industrial sites on, on the east side of 39, it'd be this one, and then we're transitioning to maybe lighter commercial into multifamily residential.
Sure.
Right? So it's how, how that happens, right? But yeah, I don't, I don't foresee us wanting to have heavy industrial more in that area.
That's exactly where I was going with that.
Yeah, yeah. So this is called the industrial site there, and then.
Okay.
Just, I could maybe add, too, that even the Limp Family Farms piece to the north, that is not zoned industrial. That is zoned highway business, if I remember right. And then, you know, the comprehensive plan that would, would look at land uses surrounding the current city limits would show those transitional uses of residential, commercial, retail. So there is no plan for increased industrial activity in this area.
I had a question. This is more just information for me, but you had mentioned that a lot of what you're seeing now in development is coming to you because of the Leap. This 65 has been designated by Purdue as a high-tech quarter. Are you seeing any interest with that term, or is it only the Leap?
A lot of it is coming in unanimous users initially. So we're, we're sifting through those as they come in, so we don't know exactly what the use is. The ones that we do know what the use are was not high-tech, no.
I'm just kind of curious how they're marketing that, because that's, I work at all the PUI, and that's kind of a big thing down there that they're here. I just, your Leap is dominating the conversation. I just didn't know how they're gonna pull that off in marketing.
Yeah. Well, and, and I would say, and that's where, again, obviously, we've, city recently took a different strategy of going away from the logistics type buildings. So I can guarantee you, a high-tech company's not going in a 450,000 square foot building. There may be one that goes at 150,000 square feet, or one of the smaller footprint buildings that they've talked about, right? So there's.
That seemed, that size seemed to make more sense.
And that's, and that's why we're, and that's again, why we're kind of changing that. But again, it, it's, it's more financially challenging to build smaller buildings, right? Versus, it's easy to put up the big bombers, which again, is why we're talking about doing a developer-backed bond for the infrastructure. And again, as you, as you noted, Brett, it's the very tip, southern tip of our, not on that section, it's the southern tip of the city, so a lot of utilities need to go there. You know, road improvements, for sure. So that's again, why the, all these are for infrastructure and cost improvements, so.
Further discussion?
No, sir.
Emma, anything you need to add to it, or need to say?
Thank you.
Sorry, I guess you're here, so.
That's fine. I'll, I'll just add that the Redevelopment Commission created a TIF area that is solely comprised of this project. The bonds would be paid only from TIF generated in this new TIF area, and only 90% would be pledged to the bonds, and 10% would be kept by the Redevelopment Commission. That the bonds are structured for only the first 10 years, that each phase generates increment. So the bond approvals, you're approving two series of bonds, as you heard Greg talk about phase one and phase two of his project, that you are only issuing bonds this year for only what is phase one of the project. And then, once they're ready for phase two, then the city would do the next series of bonds, once phase two is ready to move forward. Realty Link is the purchaser of the bonds or an affiliate of Realty Link, so there is no risk to the city. If the TIF is less, then the developer just gets paid less in terms of debt service. The city is not on the hook for any other revenues other than the TIF that is generated from this project.
You have a question for Emma?
No.
Thank you. Rob, read it. Is there a public hearing on this as well?
There is.
There's not?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2023-22 is an ordinance authorizing economic development revenue bonds, which are called the Cedars at Lebanon Project, and authorizing and improving other actions in connection therewith. Whereas Lebanon Redevelopment Commission has previously created the Lebanon Consolidated Economic Development Area. It's designated a portion of that as the area known as Cedars at Lebanon Allocation Area. Whereas Indiana Lebanon John Shaw LLC, or one of its affiliates, has advised the Lebanon Economic Development Commission and the city that it proposes that the city issue economic development revenue bonds in amount not to exceed $8,500,000. Again, for the purposes of financing all or portion of the cost of the construction of essentially public infrastructure improvements. The principal and interest on the bonds shall be payable solely from a portion of the incremental real property taxes, again, as Emma indicated, not to exceed 90%, generated and collected in that allocation area. On November 13th, 2023, the commission will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Indiana law. The commission has provided forms of the financing documents that you've received. Again, there are a number of those, a financing agreement, a trust and denture, as well as other financing documents. Therefore, this council finds and determines that the project involves the acquisition, construction, and equipping of economic development facilities as that's defined under Indiana law. The proposed financing, all or a portion of the project, as further described in the financing documents and under the act, has been approved by the commission, and it will be hereby approved by the council. The issuance of the bonds are hereby authorized. And the bonds in one or more federal taxable or tax exempt series shall not exceed $8,500,000. The mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized and directed to execute and endorse and deliver the financing documents, which are hereby approved in all respects. The mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to make such changes as may be required pursuant to Indiana law. And again, the financing documents may be amended or supplemented as necessary in the opinion of bond council to effectuate the issuance of the phase two bonds without any further action of this council. All ordinances that are in conflict are hereby repealed, and this bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. And again, this will be brought back to you on the November 13th council meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Any final discussion, thoughts from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, that will be on second reading, November 13th at 7:15 PM. That concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Make a motion to pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims. There's a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Any announcements or discussion? Any general public comment? Okay. We're intending motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's motions. There's a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? All right. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, November 13th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.